To this special meeting of the Ad Hoc Committee on Comprehensive Job Creation. I'm Paul Krikorian, joined by my colleagues, Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. Blumenfield. We're ready to begin. There are two items on today's agenda, and there will be no general public comment as this is a special meeting. So we will begin with item number one.
Item number one is Chief Legislative Analyst's Report Relative to a Public Bank Framework and Existing Housing and Economic Development Funding Programs.
All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, John Wickham with the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst. We have a report for you. Back at your February meeting on public bank matter, you had provided some additional instructions for the CLA to report. And so we have provided some information to you related to gaps in available financial services in the market, review of city services in the quasi-banking financial services sector, and potential gaps in issues that we see there. We analyzed, reviewed data from a number of sources that kind of give us some information of what's happening in the financial market with regard to available services. The committee also asked if we provide a summary review of the regulatory or legal changes necessary in order to move forward on the public bank. And so we have a review of that. That was a summary from the report that we provided previously. And then we also did just an update on information of what's happening in other jurisdictions on public banking, most notably the U.S. territory. American Samoa actually created a public bank due to the Bank of Hawaii, a commercial bank, closing in that territory and basically eliminating banking services available to the territory. So their only solution was to create a public bank. What I could do today, first off, I want to let you know that this report was prepared by a cast of thousands with help of a cast of many more. Let's see, in the CLA's office, Dora Herta, Pranita, Mattia, Clay McCarter, and Alex Whitehead helped prepare sections of the report. In addition, we received substantial help from the Housing Department and from Economic Workforce Development Department and the Finance Department. So this is very definitely a group effort, and we really appreciate all of the help that they provided. Dave Ely also helped us with the maps and the data analysis of the CRA and the HMDA. So there's a lot of information. It's a 34-page report. I could do a rundown of our recommendations and why we brought those recommendations forward. We could give more of a presentation on each of the sections, however you would like to move forward.
Yeah, I think, members, if you have particular thoughts, please let me know. But I think a good starting point would be to try to give a quick overview on the federal and state law issues, potential amendments to the city charter. And in the context of that, maybe describe the American Samoa situation and the other practices of other governments. And then what we'll do is, after we talk about that, let's talk about the things that might be able to fulfill some of the same functions that a municipal bank would within the context of other programs that we have or could have now. So why don't we start with the legal framework and then move into the other, and then we'll go to your recommendations.
Okay, sounds good. So in our previous report, we had provided a substantial amount of detail on the federal and state regulatory factors associated with creating a public bank. And there are significant issues, I think, that would allow moving forward today. For example, the amount of collateral that would be required to establish the bank, sources of insurance, and financial matters of that nature. In order to get started, you just need a substantial amount of capital in place. In addition, the state law, for example, states has requirements for where a city and municipal government can put its own money. So we can't put our money into a bank that hasn't been established for less than three years, for example. The bank that we put our money into must provide collateral of over 100% for our money. So there are questions and concerns about if we establish a bank, how could we use city finance, financial resources in order to provide the startup funds? So there are difficulties in that area. The state law and the city charter give authority to the city treasurer to make decisions independent of any other political offices where it puts its money. And so the council and the mayor would not be able to direct the treasurer to put its money into a municipal bank. So there's a whole range of these types of issues that would need to be addressed in state and federal law or in regulatory rules in order to ease this forward. Those were the things that we had reviewed. And then we saw a number of other issues in federal law, for example, and state law, such as open meeting laws or Electronic Fund Transfer Act, or Dodd-Frank. There's a whole range of banking regulations that would need to be looked at by a specialist in banking to advise us on how a municipal bank could be structured and move forward. Our thought was that the best way to accomplish that would be for the state to put together a regulatory framework, much as they did for commercial banks, because there are regulatory frameworks in state law for commercial banks and for credit unions that provide certainty to entities who are moving forward in opening, creating a bank. If the municipal government had a clear regulatory framework to move forward with, we would know what we're doing as opposed to trying to, you know, piecemeal affect laws and regulations one at a time. So it may be that if the state law was able to create a regulatory framework that looked at each of these issues and had an answer for them at the beginning, we would have a much easier path forward in finding a solution. Because, as I said, each piece individually might, you know, I don't, what's, there's like a metaphor for something like that, and I forget what the joke is. But anyway, you know, we would wind up with a Frankenstein's monster if we didn't have that kind of solution. So it makes sense to try and do something from a bigger perspective. And my understanding is that there are efforts that will be coming forward in the next legislative session, beginning in January, where we can expect to see efforts in Sacramento on this exact matter.
So there was Senator Hertzberg's bill to try to establish the statewide bank, and that's been held in committee, so that's dead.
Yes. That did not move forward at this point. And, yeah, the session ends on Friday.
Yeah.
So, and that one was in particular directed toward cannabis. The City of Los Angeles was in support of that measure, as you know. And so we should expect to see some additional efforts in that area again in the next session as well. Let's see, the one, the one place that we need to start, and the council has taken this first step down this path, was to address the charter restriction on opening a purely commercial business. And so the council placed on the ballot a measure that would create an opportunity within the charter for the city to move forward at a future date. So that charter measure will be on the ballot in November. That would create an exception to that rule to allow the city to form a municipal bank in the future. So that's actually the first step, I think, in this whole process. Once that question is answered, that supports additional efforts in state and federal law and regulation.
Can you talk a little bit about the American Samoa experience and how that's different than a municipality?
Why don't I call up Clay McCarter, who worked on that section of the report?
Good afternoon, Councilmember. Clay McCarter with the CLA's office. Yes, the American Samoa situation, the Bank of Hawaii was the only bank providing actual branches on the island. And in 2012, the Bank of Hawaii announced that it was leaving the island. And so that's when American Samoa, the government, started looking at other options. And they first tried to find another commercial bank. The Bank of Hawaii is not a public bank, it's a commercial bank. And they were looking for other commercial banks to come to the island and provide banking services, but they were unsuccessful. So they worked with the Bank of Hawaii to stay on the island for another five years as they worked out opening up a public bank. And so legislation was passed in 2017. It funded the bank via a bond issuance, which capitalized the bank with $12.5 million. And that law also required that all the government funds in American Samoa be deposited at the public bank of American Samoa. And then, for the first year, the bank was only able to offer limited services to the citizens of American Samoa. And they just recently got approval from the Federal Reserve to join the U.S. payment system, which enables them to provide checking and wire transfers and other services akin to a commercial bank.
So how long did that process take before they got that federal approval?
Took about two years.
I'm sorry?
It took about two years.
Okay. And, all right. So for some of the purposes that we've talked about here, the Federal Reserve approval is a significant sticking point in a lot of the commercial services that have been discussed with regard to a municipal bank?
Yes.
Okay.
And that process took a lot longer than normal because of American Samoa is a very small island, only 60,000 residents. So the Federal Reserve was really looking at things very, very carefully. Normally, that process to join the U.S. payment system is relatively quick.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on the regulatory and legal framework, members, before we move on to the alternatives? Mr. West?
Maybe a couple. But you indicated that, in the beginning, they were unable to provide checking and these types of services to their customers. Now, they had no other banking institutions?
They had ATMs from a bank from New Zealand, but there was no actual physical branches where you'd go into a branch, talk to a teller, and do that. So that's why they were working with the Bank of Hawaii to remain on the island, keep their branches open for as long as possible.
Because let's hypothetically say that we were able to, the people wanted to, and the council figured out a way to do it. In the beginning, my view would be that we would work with other institutions so that we could use their ATMs, and they could provide the types of services that maybe we wouldn't provide, that maybe when it started out, it would be more of a banker's bank. So I'm just curious, is there a way to have arrangement with other financial institutions to provide those other services while this bank would be growing and determining, you know, eventually what type of services that it would want to provide?
We would need to look into that. I think that would be, so you're saying that the Bank of Los Angeles would use another bank, an established bank, and on behalf of the Bank of Los Angeles' customers, that bank would be providing the checking, the services as the Bank of Los Angeles was ramping up and getting--
You would look into that.
Yeah, we could look into that.
I wouldn't want people to think that this is going to be passed, and then all of a sudden, we have 50 branches. There has to be a process in order to even get to that point.
I, it's still really new to this whole banking issue, but it's my understanding that a banker's bank uses its resources to provide, its financial resources to make loans or provide financial, you know, contributions to other banks under certain stipulations, right? So we would give our assets, loan them to another bank, who would then be making, you know, student loans, or auto loans, or home loans, or that kind of thing. So you aren't actually, as a banker's bank, you don't have customers, you know, like a family down the street. Your customers are other banks as a banker's bank, right? And so that would be one way that you could start in that area, as you suggest, and then move into the other areas of providing personal banking services if you choose to go in that direction in future time.
I just am curious about that.
Yeah.
Questions about the report in general. The banking development districts you mentioned in New York, I didn't quite understand, are those mostly in the rural upstate areas where they have trouble finding banks, or were they in boroughs, or were they in more of an urban area?
Let me ask Alex Whitehead to come up, and I believe Alex worked on that section.
Yeah, and if I may, before we dive into the specifics of the banking districts, let's shift now, if we can, and the next section of this whole report is about how do we address the potential problems that a municipal bank would solve, like areas that are unbanked, banking deserts, demographic parts of our community that have been denied banking services that a municipal bank would be able to fill the void. The idea here was to go and take another look at ways that we could achieve those objectives, either pending the development of or in lieu of the development of a municipal bank institution. So with that being said, one of those areas was banking deserts. And that, as I understand it, is what New York was trying to address with the banking district issue.
Exactly.
So just to set it up that way, and go ahead.
Hi, Alex Whitehead with the CLI. So the banking development districts were actually in a mix of both urban and suburban districts. So they were able, that were banking deserts specifically.
So they were going after banking deserts, even in urban areas?
Yes. And you'd think that with such a big city, there wouldn't be as many, but if you look at our maps, there are, you know, it's everywhere. It's not even just within urban.
Yeah, although, one of the things I noticed on the maps of the banks and where, you know, some of those areas looked like underserved areas, but, you know, one of the big deserts was Bel Air. And, you know, I don't think that's a problem where there are unbanked people there, they just don't allow banks to be there. So it's important, obviously, to, you know, figure out where the truly unbanked are and what, you know, what the real deserts are.
So geography doesn't necessarily match up with need?
Not with, well, the biggest chunk on that map, I looked at it closely, and I'm like, wait a second.
Yeah.
That's Bel Air and the hills. That is not a banking problem. So--
And that's one of the things that we found. The maps were interesting, and we were only able to kind of delve into the surface of the data that's available. There's a significant amount of data, particularly in the Home Mortgage Disclosure Act. But we saw in there, one of the reasons we put in the maps on where land use and square footage of commercial industrial retail sites were, was to show a correlation between the availability of the land uses with the actual loan activity because of precisely the question of Bel Air. Because Bel Air was actually popping up on a number of the maps. For example, the Home Mortgage Disclosure Act data, there are huge loans that are being turned down in Bel Air because of the price of the property. And so it was showing up on our maps as, you know, there are a lot of loans being denied at substantial amounts of money. Well, it's because of the types of housing there. And it's not the same, it's not the same effect as you would have in South Los Angeles or the San Fernando Valley, where you have a lot of smaller loans that are being turned down. So we had to, we had to really take a closer look at the data that was provided to make sure we were getting at meaningful impacts. And what we saw is, you know, the banking districts, or the banking desert map, really looks a lot like the map where there are fewer small business loans, which really looks like the map of where there are fewer homeownership loans. And that is getting to this question of, and maybe Abigail with the Housing Department can talk about the financial empowerment issues that are running through all of the sections of this report, where somebody in these neighborhoods can't go down to the local bank and apply for a loan, for a business or for a home, because there is no local bank.
Right. Go ahead.
It's okay. Just to follow, I mean, the question of why people are unbanked, and is it because, and I was wondering this in reading the report, is it because there's no branch? Or is it because it's correlated to education and income? Or is it correlated to ethnicity? And it was a little hard to tell in the report, and maybe we don't know, but there's so many different factors. And knowing that answer a little better will help us with, you know, what the real solutions are.
Right.
Because, you know, branches are one thing, but you have all sorts of online opportunities, potentially. Each one has a different fix, so I guess I'll throw that back at you as a question.
Yeah, I can have a little bit of, we actually, I started looking at the online banking issues. It's called FinCEN, and it's a big issue, you know, it's a big, whole, new thing that's coming along. These kinds of online banks seem to be trying to reach out to communities that are unbanked or underbanked at this point. They see a new market there, but it's new technology, and we really don't know where that's going yet, so we didn't explore that in depth in this report. But maybe Abigail might have better information. I know that the FDIC data was very instructive in pointing to the unbanked and the underbanked communities. And it really stood out starkly, you know, in those areas, particularly with single female households that have such a high rate of unbanked and underbanked activity that there was room to go. And Abigail works with the Family Source Centers, and they're doing exceptional work, and she can talk about that.
Thank you, John. Abigail Marquez with the Housing and Community Investment Department. I personally have been working on financial empowerment initiatives for probably the last 15 years that I've been with the city. I started working on the promotion of the Earned Income Tax Credit that we've expanded through the Family Source System. Our Family Source Centers are now serving over 6,000 people through the Family Source Center, helping them to connect to over $10 million in tax credits, both through the Earned Income Tax Credit, the Child Tax Credit, the California Earned Income Tax Credit, which is a new tax credit program. We also have introduced financial literacy courses that have now evolved to financial coaching. So we've trained coaches across all Family Source Centers to help them either open up a bank account, keep that account active. Part of the challenge, and there's a lot of reports that point to the question that Councilmember Blumenfield, you asked, is, I think, the research that we've read is largely due to the hidden fees that a lot of the banks have. And so when you ask a person, why are you going to a payday lending place, is because those fees are more transparent. And so there's a lot of reports that point to that. We did have an initiative in the city several years ago that the county has now taken on, which was the Bank On program, the Bank On L.A. program, where we tried to engage a lot of banks and financial credit unions to offer free or low-cost bank products to customers. It was really hard to enforce that because you can't regulate the banks, and so that was during the time of the recession, and so banks started to change their fees. And unfortunately, the program wasn't funded, and so it was part of the former Community Development Department. But again, the county is looking at a Bank On program, it's county-wide now, trying to reengage the banks. But, you know, there's a lot of research that points to why families are not, you know, banked. Part of it is the fact that they are not in communities where there's banks accessible. The other challenge is those hidden fees that a lot of the mainstream financial institutions do have. And so again, part of this is this conversation with banks and credit unions to be more transparent about the fees that they're charging consumers.
Mr. Harris Dawson, you were trying to get in earlier.
Yeah, I was just trying to get in on this discussion of the unbank and the lack of branches, and just, you know, this might be anecdotal, but I'm actually very curious about it. So Bank of America, one of the biggest banks, has three branches in the eighth district. They're closing two of them by the end of the year. So the unbanked question is not a static thing, it's an ongoing thing, and it will be interesting to get a projection for where we expect, where we expect these banks to be. Say it takes us five or six years, by that time, all of our, you know, our unbanked problem might be much, much worse.
Right.
And I think that's probably knowable from this stage.
Right.
And overlaying that is the fact that industry-wide, there, my, maybe this is just speculative, but I'm assuming that as in retail and as in so many other areas, the number of bank branches nationally of all banks everywhere is going to contract. There's going to be fewer branches, more direct consumer services through digital means.
There's a lot of online banking now that has become more and more popular. The challenge with that is the technology gap.
Of course.
The digital gap that exists in communities. So we have been also focused on working to bridge that gap within the Family Source System, because a lot of, even the credit unions that do have reliable products and services that they are making available to consumers are closing down a lot of their branches and offering online banking options as an option. But that, again, that still creates a barrier for a lot of the families that we're working with.
And for small businesses as well.
Correct.
Because it used to be that the bank on the corner is where you developed your relationship, and the business owner would know the bank manager personally for years. And, you know, the loan approval process and all of that would be much easier than in a situation where you're having to send an application to the headquarters in New York and hope that you get a favorable decision just based on credit history and so on. So--
Through the algorithm.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Okay, so you talked a little bit about some of the things that Family Source Center is doing that you've promoted. Coming back to Mr. Blumenfield's questions about the banking districts, let's talk a little bit about what New York is doing specifically to try to incentivize more presence by the banking industry in the banking deserts. And, you know, what other solutions are you guys looking at in terms of addressing some of these needs of these populations that are currently underserved and unbanked?
So the banking development districts, they would help banks provide the services to stimulate local economies by encouraging the branches to actually open up. A lot of these, sorry, I don't have specifics on what they offered. I don't have specifics on what they were offered specifically, but--
But so, talk to the councilmembers.
Oh, so actually, in 2009, the CLA released a report to create, regarding the steps necessary to create a banking district in Los Angeles or a program. It would have offered possibly a guaranteed percentage of municipal deposits and discretionary council district deposits, real property tax breaks that decrease over time, fast-track land use approval, and incentives for contractors to seek city business to bank with BDD branches. So this was actually approved, and a task force was adopted to research this, but the task force was not convened. So following New York State's lead, we recommend that finance be instructed to renew the task force and prepare the necessary reports to see this going forward.
Yeah, and I think that's such an important step. I'm kind of astonished that that didn't move forward 10 years ago. These are all steps that we ought to be taking for jobs creation purposes, for economic stimulus purposes, regardless of, you know, regardless of the degree of the unbanked, just to stimulate more investment by the financial industry in establishing more branches here and providing more services to all of our constituents. So I think that that's a really important step to take, and that task force, of course, should focus on these specific areas of greatest need, geographically and demographically, about where the service gaps that can be filled if we encourage more of the private sector's investment in banking services here in Los Angeles. So, related to that, one of your recommendations relates to the city service card, and that reminded me of the discussion that we had about this. You'll remember, Mr. West, and we talked about this with Richard Ollercon's suggestion of like eight years ago, something like that. And the idea was going to be that there would be a sort of a library card with lots of financial and other services attached to it. And that kind of went nowhere.
Yes.
And as I thought it through, and maybe you can refresh our memory about that idea, but also since one of the recommendations is to reevaluate the city service card, talk a little bit about why it would be beneficial to have a city service card as opposed to having, say, you know, citywide membership in a credit union which would offer prepaid cards, for example. Anybody who's a DWP customer can be a credit union member and will offer prepaid credit cards, or prepaid debit cards, rather. So, you know, what is there to be gained by having a city service card? So, you know, what is there to be gained by having a City Service Card? I think I know the answer, but I want to hear you talk.
Yes, and I'm going to try to rely on my memory. I actually wrote the RFP, but it has been eight, nine years. But we did release an RFP. We received two proposals at the time, although we did receive a letter from one mainstream financial institution asking for more time. In their letter, they indicated that this type of project requires a lot of internal review and approval, but they were very interested. The one proposal that we did receive did not meet the 70 minimum threshold to be recommended for funding, and partly because, or primarily because of a lot of the hidden fees that were also associated with that card. And again, it was really challenging for us to be able to regulate those fees because it was a private financial institution. If I remember correctly, the reason why there was interest in a municipal ID card was to protect undocumented Angelenos who wanted to access both an ID card. The main driver behind that effort was to give undocumented individuals access to a municipal ID, and then also attach it with a banking product. Banking regulations do offer a lot of protections to consumers, and so that's why there was a unique opportunity to have both a municipal ID attached to a banking ID. So it was launched in Oakland, I believe, and in Richmond. I don't believe that it's still being implemented or offered as a product in those cities. I'd have to research. But I do know part of the challenges that we had when we reviewed the proposal was a lot of the hidden fees. And so we were trying to discourage these predatory practices, and we felt that it was just not going to meet the needs of the city at that time. I'd have to research to see if other cities, I don't believe other cities have implemented such a program that is both focused on the municipal ID. Part of the work that we do also includes representing the city on a coalition that is called the Cities for Financial Empowerment Coalition. It's led by currently the City of New York and the City of, initially the City of San Francisco, City of New York. City Valley has been a member for over 10 years. 14 different cities that are focused on municipal financial empowerment initiatives such as these. I can survey them. That's a good group to engage to see if other cities have implemented such a program, but I don't believe it has been.
Okay. Okay, we kind of bounced around a little bit on this, but I don't want to deprive you of the opportunity to put a ribbon on it if there's other things that you want to highlight in the report before we get to further questions and comments.
No, I think that's really it. We've kind of touched on the recommendations in the report, you know, going back and revisiting the banking districts proposal, revisiting the Service Card proposal to see where that is, doing some additional work to see how we could reach out to certain demographics. Maybe there's some, you know, asking the Commission on Status of Women and the Housing Department to look at ways that it may be better, more effective to reach out to single female head of household, to find out what would really bring them into the system. And the same with Black and Hispanic households and households earning less than $75,000. Maybe there are special marketing approaches or special messages that would be effective in reaching these populations to help them come into the financial empowerment programs that the Housing Department and the Family Source Centers are offering. So just to get some other people working on putting some thought to that. The, let's see, a couple of new ideas that came up. One was in discussing, we really haven't talked too much about the business side, and there's, you know, the SADS is going on right now. You're reviewing the SADS, and there are proposals in there. So there's really not too much that we want to get into on that here. But one of the things we learned from the department is that they do a lot of work with potential business owners upfront to get them prepared to go apply for loans and to open businesses, but there's not a lot of follow-up on the backend with those people that they help. So it may be that there could be some new services put together to help through that applying for a loan process and the setting up of the business process to help them to be more effective as they become business owners.
Yeah.
And then the other new.
By the way, on that point, John, I think that's also a good recommendation. One thought that I had that I'd like EWD to have a look at before they report back is whether it would make sense, once we do all this preparatory work with a startup business, with a small business that's trying to get capitalized, trying to get a loan, whatever they're trying to do, we don't, we get them prepared, we don't do the handoff very smoothly necessarily. They're on their own then. It would be, I think it would be helpful to put out an RFQ or something to the financial industry to say, and maybe this is with community banks, for example, to say, would you be interested in a partnership with the city so that we work with the businesses, prepare them, make them loan-ready for you, and then we will give you all of our business people who come in for loans, and you get, you know, first dibs, if you will, so that there's a relationship between the business source centers, the city, and the financial institutions, so that they know that they're going to get good candidates because we've prepared them. And in return for that, the banks, the community bank or whatever it is, the financial institution is going to give them better treatment, is going to have a program by which, you know, they are welcomed in and not have to go through the usual, you know, wringer that a long-established business might. It's not a developed idea, but I think just having some sort of a public-private relationship there that would create a smoother handoff and a more welcoming environment for the new business, the minority-owned business, the, you know, the entrepreneur who wants to come in and doesn't know how to do this, I think there's something there that would be of benefit. So anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, the last new recommendation we had was to have finance look at the feasibility of including a requirement in any future banking contracts, the provision of financial personal banking training and education, again, in support of this, the programs that we're already doing in that area, you know, start to bring in banking resources as well to supplement the work that's going on in that area as a contractual requirement, a community benefit, so to speak.
Okay. Mr. Bloomingfield.
Just following up on the financial literacy question, because that's clearly one of the big problems. The programs we have affect small groups of folks. What about, have we looked at coordinating with LAUSD and with Community College to really take financial literacy to the next level, and would that make a big difference?
Yes, you're absolutely right. We do need to offer more financial literacy, and I would even say financial coaching. We have found that coaching is really that opportunity to have that one-on-one conversation. Literacy is more in a classroom style. We've trained across our Family Source Centers, financial literacy coaches, and they're helping families look at improving their credit score, you know, reducing their debt, things that we're actually able to see and track. I know that we recently met with a superintendent on another initiative, and he did share that he was looking at integrating financial education in the high school curriculum. So we'll be following up with them on that. The libraries have also been doing a lot of work in promoting financial literacy. We've done events with them in the past, and that's another great hub. I think we would also look at other systems like Family Source, our workforce development system that is helping to connect people with employment could also be potentially offering financial literacy and financial coaches. I know that in New York City, all of their WEOWA-funded programs are offering both workforce development and financial coaching services. So the models are out there, and there is a lot of opportunity to scale this work.
Great. I think that's the big, how you scale it is the million-dollar question, and we have partners that could help us with that. And speaking of partners, when you're talking about the Service Cards, I was thinking about our transit stops. Have we, because that's the other place to really get folks who need banking is probably our public transit. You know, I'm thinking, maybe where the orange line meets the red line, or all sorts of key hubs. Have we looked into making, integrating those into our, either the Service Cards or some other piece to this puzzle? And I guess I would add that onto our list then of.
Sure.
In addition to the other way, the other touchpoints, the libraries and whatnot, I would think just on the natural that the transit hubs would be key places, especially because people are already buying tap cards. There's already a commercial transaction, but, you know, why not incentivize a commercial, you know, branch of either our bank or a commercial bank at those locations like you have in the grocery stores and whatnot.
Okay. Anything else, members, any other questions? Mr. West?
Because you're getting ready to move on from the banking.
We are, yeah. So anything? Yeah, please.
I really appreciate all of the hard work that everyone has done on this issue. And I know that we've made a variety of requests, and you guys have had conversations with people from other jurisdictions, and just like the Samoa situation, and I know there have been conversations with other cities. Have you ever thought about actually setting up a meeting with individuals that are promoting the public banking concept, where experts like Ellen Brown and others, where you could bring them in and ask them a series of questions and get from them why they think that this works? And a lot of the hurdles that have been brought up by us and in some of your reports, to get their response to those and then give us an actual report back on that meeting. I have heard that they have alternatives to doing a variety of things, and I think we should vet those. And I was wondering if that's in the plan, or could we make that request?
Absolutely. And we had reached out to them at one point and hadn't had a return response. They had come into our office and met with us very briefly, just as an accidental occurrence that was very helpful. So it would make sense to follow up with that. I actually have, all of us who are working on this subject area, and not just in the city of Los Angeles, but in other jurisdictions, have this core question of asking them to model how they think this would work in a number of sectors. How does this work as a model for generating funds for affordable housing or for infrastructure? Because we haven't been able to quite understand from the information they've provided how it gets there. And so that conversation, it's time for that conversation because Sacramento is getting, appears to be ready to move forward with some legislative solutions in the next session next year.
Well, if the Chair and the other members of the committee would be supportive, I would like to recommend that we have that conversation. And my last question, Mr. Chair, have we had an opportunity, and would they even talk with us, the Bank of North Dakota? Have we sat down with them? I mean, just, I don't know if all of my information is correct, but this bank has, I think, technically made a profit for the past 14, 15 years. And when, no, for the past 14 or 15 years, and that when the bottom fell out of the banking industry, they were unfazed. And I would like to know, how did they protect themselves? And so I would just think that that would be a conversation worth having, where maybe some form of a report could come out of that dialogue as well. So those would be two things that I would recommend.
Are you sending us to Bismarck in December? Is that what I'm hearing?
But you know what I, you know what I find is easier? They'll come here. They will definitely.
They will, in December, January.
All right. So before we vote on the recommendation, thank you for the thoughtful recommendations. I think this is really what I had hoped we would have at this point in the process. Lot of good steps forward that will have, you know, hopefully tangible benefits. So thank you for that work. Let's go to our comment on this item. Is there a Mr. Hernandez here? Okay, then Noel Weiss is our first speaker.
Good afternoon. In the span of one minute, I'll just simply say that, you know, of all the materials you've received, there's been some, I think one key one that has been omitted that should be considered. And I've got a couple of articles here that I'm going to give to Herb, and hopefully he can circulate them to you guys once he reviews them. But essentially, what we're talking about is a constitutional, basically the development of alternative currency backed by gold and silver, which is constitutional under the U.S. Constitution. And California can form its own state bank, can issue its own currency for interstate transactions, and through that vehicle and mechanism, you can basically begin to solve a lot of problems, interstate vis-à-vis the use of an alternative currency, particularly where you're starting to really create a trend. Texas is starting along these lines. Utah has passed a law saying that gold and silver are legal tender in those states. Arizona, same thing. North Carolina, Tennessee, and the like. It's something that needs to be focused. You've got a lot of experts, outside lawyers, things that you could basically consult along those lines. But I'm going to give Herb this article. Hopefully, maybe we can sit down and talk in some greater detail about this, because I think it will work to try to accomplish your objective.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, very much. Mr. Herman is not here. Mr. Spindler.
Okay, go ahead.
So the first thing you need to do, and it is this to Mr. Marquez is get her blessing out his candle because he's not solvent. You need to have people who pay their bills, pay the credit card bills, to be able to form a bank, because the FBI will not clear your prints to put your hands on a federally-insured bank, dum-dum. Also, at gold at $1,240 an ounce, how the fuck are you going to back $4 billion worth of cash in gold? That's what the Saudis did, dum-dum. So the answer is you can't do what you're doing, but I would like it, and if you manage to do it, then we will all rob that bank, and then we'll cut up the difference. For example, Mr. Spindler will get a million, Mr. Krikorian will get $5 because he's a shit, and then we'll give the rest of $1 million to everybody in the room. So let's form a bank, let's rob it, just like Daddy Bakewell. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, is Mr. Hunt here still? He is not. Okay, so that'll close public comment on item number one. And if there's no further questions or concerns, members, it should be the action of the committee to approve the recommendations contained in the CLA report with the addition of the additional requests that Mr. Weston articulated regarding meeting with and hearing from the public bank advocates, the CLA's office, to meet with the public bank advocates and representatives of the Bank of North Dakota, as well as exploring the public-private interim option that Mr. Weston described, and reporting back on that as well.
And so they look at the transit stops as well?
Yeah, yes, yes.
As well as your edit.
Embellishments that we made as we went, yes. Okay, great. Thank you very much. That brings up item number two.
Item number two is a CLA report relative to proposed changes to the Local Business Preference Program and Bureau of Contract Administration report relative to citywide data for fiscal year 2016-17 Local Business Enterprise Local Business Preference Program. This matter is also referred to Economic Development Committee.
All right.
Good afternoon. Brian Randall with the CLA's office. As requested by this committee and council, our office has submitted a report on proposed changes to the Local Business Preference Program. I can give an overview of the report at that.
Well, is Con Ed here too?
Yes, representatives from Con Ed are here as well. Yes, representatives from Con Ed are here as well.
Good afternoon. Yeah, I think it's always helpful if you can just give a really quick overview, and then we'll go into questions from there.
Over the past few months, a working group of representatives from various city departments have met to discuss possible changes to the Local Business Preference Program. Also, the Bureau of Contract Administration reached out to all city departments to obtain input on recommended changes to the program. As detailed in our report, our office recommends the following proposed changes to improve the effectiveness of the program. Number one, allow manufacturers, representatives, and distributors to receive the preference as long as products are manufactured within the county. Number two, require that two-thirds of both goods and services be produced within the county to qualify for the preference. Three, increase the $100,000 contract threshold for the small local business program to $150,000 to be consistent with the Local Business Preference Program and to account for inflation and other factors. And number four, combine the Small Local Business Program and the Local Business Preference Program ordinances. We recommend that the Bureau of Contract Administration be instructed to report to council on any next steps required to implement these proposals, and also request the city attorney to prepare any necessary ordinances. We do have one requested amendment to Recommendation 1(c) of our report regarding the Small Local Business Program. We recommend that the word "minimum" be removed and changed to the word "maximum," because the Small Local Business Program provides a preference for contracts valued at less than $100,000 right now. So that change would address that correction, and we've provided that language to the city clerk. That concludes my report, and representatives from BCA, Water and Power, and the city attorney are here to answer questions as well.
Great. Anything to add? Okay.
No, I don't think so.
So thanks for looking at this, and I'll start by saying that the local preference ordinance was my creation initially, and it has, I think, now that there's been a track record, it has certainly been helpful for those businesses that have been able to take advantage of it. But I, it's not been as broadly used as I would have hoped, number one. And number two, I think the struggle that we had in council in defining what a local business entitled to the preference should be, produced, John mentioned the Frankenstein's monster earlier, it kind of is that. It's a mishmash of businesses that are truly what we think of small local businesses, outposts of international businesses. It just, it isn't necessarily achieving the objective that we wanted to achieve when we started. So I'm really appreciative that you've given some thought, not only to improvements to this program, but how to interface this program with the other preference program for small businesses as well. So, members, did you have any questions about this? Well, I'll close if you want to start. Go ahead, Mr. Blumenfield. Mr. Harris Tossen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all for the feedback that you've given. The big question on the local program is this whole question of local, which we raised at the last committee meeting. So the people who, businesses that are in Los Angeles, voters in Los Angeles have made financial commitments to solve a variety of problems that other people in the county haven't made. And they compete with businesses that haven't made that commitment, but they don't get any extra credit for being a part of L.A. And so I'm wondering if you all looked at that, what our capacity is to remedy that, if it's giving people extra points, or if it's letting them account for their tax and fiscal burden as a result of being in L.A. versus a business in another part of the county.
I'll defer to the city attorney's office on that question.
Good afternoon, council members. Danya Minasian, deputy city attorney. The charter in Section 371(a) has limitations on what the definition of local can be. It includes county or state. So, but the, but the way the actual term is defined is to be set by ordinance. But it is limited, and I think it would take a change to a charter amendment in order for that to be effectuated.
So what if we didn't use the, what if we surrendered that term "local" since it's been defined already by the charter, and we just say Los Angeles?
Well, that, the allowance for the bid preference is granted through the charter. So that section actually limits the bid preference to local, and so the authority to be able to do the bid preference is given through the charter, and therefore, local has to be defined in the way the charter defines it.
But it is, it is within the reach of the voters to go to the polls and say, we want Los Angeles, we want local to mean Los Angeles.
Absolutely. If the council were in agreement and wanted to move forward with having a ballot measure prepared to amend the charter, then we can make that happen.
Sorry, Mr. Blumenfield, before I lose my train of thought, though, on that point, and I think it's a really good point about, you know, you were asking Mr. Harris Tossen about changing the terminology instead of making this, and if that doesn't work, what if, is it possible to say, maybe outside of the RFP process, is it possible to say that any business, however we define it, as being within the city of Los Angeles, gets some other differential treatment outside of the bidding? So if you're a local business in the city of Los Angeles, and you are contracting with the city of Los Angeles to provide, as a vendor, to provide goods or services, can we say, give them a, some other treatment, special treatment to help offset some of their costs outside of the bidding process? Because I get that we can't distinguish among competitors for, you know, for contracting. I get that. Interstate commerce, we got other, you know, issues that we have to deal with there. I get it. But once they've already contracted, can we give them some tax preference or other preference that would be able to offset some of their costs?
So are you asking, once they've already entered into a contract?
Yes.
And they're a city, and they're a city contract, like citywide contractor?
Yes. Is it, does that create a different factual situation?
It does create a different factual situation that actually I think would be a little more appropriate, probably for a different area of city attorney advice, but because what the opinion I just rendered has to do with bid preferences and competitive bid proposals.
Exactly.
So I'm sure we can look into that and maybe work with your office to try to figure out some kind of, if that is possible, if it's legal, if it's...
I'd like to know that. I'd like to at least brainstorm it with you, because the businesses that are bidding would know that if they're the successful bidder, they would have a benefit. But it's a different situation than if you actually choose one over another based on their work. I think it might make a legal difference that's worth exploring, so.
Yeah, I appreciate the chair's sort of drill down on that, because the, it just seems to me that we ought to, there ought to be some way that we can account for the financial difference that a business has when it operates inside of Los Angeles. I mean, you know, just in my district, I'm bordered by Inglewood and West Athens and Hawthorne. None of them pay for homeless housing, none of them. So the idea that they get to compete with a business on the other side of the line that does, and there's never, there's, in no part of the process is there any accounting for that, just seems like us working against our own interests. And so I, any way we can get at it, even if it's on the back end, as Mr. Krikorian suggests, I think it's, I think it would be extremely helpful and fair.
And I think if you'd like us to look into that, I'm happy to work with your office, but we would like to maybe have what types of incentives you're thinking about to kind of have a specific opinion for each one.
Sure. Well, I hadn't thought about it until three minutes ago, so I'll try to develop some of those thoughts and be happy to have a discussion with your office. Mr. Blumenfield.
Well, just to think about, I mean, I love that idea that you're both talking about, and maybe the idea is to find very specific L.A. taxes that only businesses in L.A. pay, and then you can offer it to everyone equally without discrimination, because you're, but the only people who can take advantage of it are L.A. folks, and whether that's a property tax issue or an employee tax, you know, credit of some sort. That's a great. And then also toward your initial point about this being a charter thing, be a charter, we could put something in the charter, the only people that would vote on that would be folks in the city of L.A. The county doesn't have to vote on that, right?
I believe it would be a city vote.
Yeah. So it seems, it seems like a slam dunk, you know, proposition. I'm happy to co, you know, co-author it or what have you. I mean, it's a great idea. It'd be really bad if you lost. Yeah. I don't know who's going to...
I mean, I'm sure you'd want to know what kind of impact it would make, so it would need to go through that whole process, but it would probably, it would have to be on the March 2020 ballot, because all measures, everything's closed for the next election.
Yeah, that's not that far away, and we could go through that process, but if we, you know, to start that process now makes sense to put on ballot. The, you know, one of the reasons that we mentioned about combining the SLBP with the LBBP, that has to do with the Local Business Program, the brokers and representatives, which I think everybody's alluding to, which is one of the loopholes, I guess, that folks use in order to claim being an L.A. business when they're really, they're not, or they just have this outpost. And I'm wondering, you know, if you could talk about that a little bit, but also, should the recommendation, or could the recommendation be more explicit in requiring that any combined ordinance that we do, when we consolidate these two, also be real clear about this broker issue?
I think if we use the language that is contained in the Local Business Preference Program, it alleviates the broker issue. I think that's an issue with the Small Local Preference Program ordinance. So I think that's a problem that can be alleviated.
So it doesn't need explicit language? It can, it'll just be cured by consolidation?
Consolidation. I believe so.
Okay. I want to make sure, so that's...
Well, I mean, I think...
Obviously, you don't know the future, but that's, but you think that that's, your best judgment, it'll solve that?
It should. If we model it from the Local Business Preference Program, which is a more recent ordinance, the Small Local is a very old ordinance that was enacted initially in 1980 and only amended last in 2011. So if we basically start with the Local Business Preference Ordinance and move from there, then it should alleviate that.
Okay. And are there other preference programs, since we're doing this, that we should, you know, where, that are susceptible to abuse, that we should be examining, and what are the other, what are the, besides the broker, which is the most obvious one, what are the other ones that we should be on the lookout for?
The other preference program is for transitional job opportunities, employers, and that's something that we are working with other council members on to also bring forward.
But is that subject to the kind of, this kind of abuse?
The abuse there could potentially be a little different. There, what's recently come is with the minimum wage ordinance, there is an exemption for transitional job opportunity certified firms, so we are seeing more companies apply for that certification that really don't provide the services in a substantial manner, but they want that minimum wage exemption.
Okay. Thank you. That's another example of what you were talking about, Mr. Harris Tossen, earlier. Your business that's right across the boundary, the city boundary, is paying a lower wage than the one within your district, and that's a real cost that puts them at a competitive disadvantage when it comes to bidding with the city that mandated that.
Well, I definitely think that that has to be part of our, the legislative findings when, when the amendments are made.
Yeah. And just, we don't have to deal with it now, but I just want to, whenever we talk about this change from countywide to city, I do just want to also raise the issue that even on a countywide basis, it, the economic benefit of the local preference still benefits, because people who live in your district might work at that business over, you know, someplace else.
Right, right. It does.
And so there are benefits to having it be in the city. Fairness to the business, because of our regulatory scenario, our tax base and revenues that come into our budget because of the business being there. But in terms of its economic impact and employment impact, it really shouldn't matter from a policy perspective, you know, where the business is located, because it's impacting the entire local economy, so. Okay. So anything else that we didn't cover that we should cover? Any other questions, members? Okay. We do have a comment on this item. Thank you all very much. So I'd like to invite up Mr. Hunt first.
I'm not listening.
Sorry?
I'm not listening.
Oh, okay. Then Mr. Spindler, please.
Right. So what we have to understand is, is that you got everybody on the border of the eight districts, and they don't want to be in the L.A., so they out in Athens, shout out to everybody in unincorporated L.A. County, including Hacienda Heights and Ladera Heights, the home of the Herb Western Empire, all outside of L.A. City. They don't have to pay your stupid shit, and they just on the border, a few feet outside the city limit, and you can't do shit about it. You can't stop it, and that's the problem. So the only way you get the business in here is start owing the taxes, but you ain't going to do it, because the reason you ain't going to do it is because you got the ghetto mentality. You gotta have the Trump mentality, like Athens, like Atwater Village, like all these other places. They know business, especially my good friend, Mayor Butts of Inglewood. He know how to steal, and he gonna get the clippers, and he gonna kick your ass out of here. That's right.
Right, members...
Yes, sir. Oh, I forgot.
Okay. You're disrupting the meeting, Mr. Spindler. The recommendations that are included in the report should be revised, so that Item 1(c) of the CLA report reads as follows: Increase the $100,000 maximum contract threshold for the SLBP to $150,000 to be consistent with the LBBP and to account for inflation and other factors. So with that change, are there any objections to proceeding with the recommendations? All right, then that will be the action of the committee, and there being no other business before the committee, we are adjourned.